Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting, regular meeting for Tuesday, October 29th, 2024. I am opening the meeting at 6:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for its stand for information under oath into this beautiful liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Approve the warrants, number WR 2509 payables, PR 2508 payroll. What would the Board like to do with those?
Make a motion that we approve the warrants WR 25-09 payables and PR 25-08 payables. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Public session. Anybody here for public session tonight? Claire?
I'm Claire Hunter from 170 Lincoln Road. I'm speaking on behalf of the COA. We wanted to share some information with you so that you don't spend some unnecessary money in the upcoming fiscal year. So among us in the COA, we've discussed our future and what we've decided is that we're going to continue as we are. We're only going to have those activities that people come to and participate in. So we're cutting back, but we're going to keep the exercise, the functional fitness, which is well attended, Zumba, yoga. People like to come to the potluck lunch, a lunch bunch, and then there are some of the health activities that we have that people like to go to. So the blood pressure, blood pressure and glucose and the podiatry. We're following back to that because people come and we will hold there. The congregate lunches and Wheels on Meals is separate. So that is not to be touched. That is remains in place. Because we're following back with our activities, we don't need an activity director. The activities that we are doing is are being handled by volunteers that have taken on the activity or else it's self-directed. So we don't need an activities director. And because we don't have new activities that we are advertising to senior citizens, we will no longer have the expense of publishing and mailing the Herald either. We're building up a mailing list that we can use email to mail out to people to notify them of things. So we will communicate that way with the electronic board, the Barry Gazette, which we're going to keep updated. There's an update coming up.
Okay, good.
Yep, and we'll update the website.
It's all the electronic.
Yeah, so we were going to fall back to that position. So then next year, in the upcoming fiscal 2026 budget, we will be able to eliminate and that will be able to save you the activities director salary. And we wanted you to have this information because you know North Brookfield has approached you about a merger. I don't know who else has.
Well, we had mentioned that Barry had contacted us as well.
Okay, and I am anticipating whatever they ask you for will be more than what our budget would be without the activities director. I took a quick look at this year. We have $8,000 in operating expenses. I'm figuring next year probably around $9,000 because of expenses. Plus, we need to have the Microsoft software so I can do the email and make sure that we have all financial information accessible to the town on the computer downstairs. So we really wanted you to be aware of that because we felt it was critical for you when you have to make a decision. Okay?
Yes, thank you. And vendor, are you still going to have the Zumba up by vendor?
Zumba by vendor.
Melanie.
Oh, yes, yes. We will, yeah, she will be the vendor providing it, but then she just bills us and God willing, we get the formula grant. You know, we usually pay it out of the formula grant. So she provides a Zumba and the functional fitness.
Okay.
Allison provides the podiatry and the other two ladies that provide blood pressure and blood pressure and glucose, they provide us free of charge.
Yes.
So our costs would be, we'll probably have still outreach, recreation, transportation, and then we're going to have to have some membership. And then the software dues for my senior center and also for Microsoft. Yeah.
And is Zumba still going to be held in Rutland?
Yes, as a matter of fact, another point, that's a good point to bring up Lucy because I-
Okay, sorry for that interruption. Barbara, yes?
Claire and I worked closely together on all of these ideas and I wanted you to know that I have them in writing for you. I have them fleshed out with reasons why we decided to do these things. And we researched, we discussed, and it was unanimously voted to do these things at our October 11th meeting of the COA. The other thing that's important, I won't go on because I have it all written for you. The other thing that's important to know that currently we serve 22, in the past two years, we've served 22 out of 571 seniors in OCAM.
So excluding congregate meals.
Excluding congregate meals.
Okay.
And the congregate meals and Meals on Wheels remain active as an entity of elder services.
Yeah.
So, so this is what Claire said. This is the information fleshed out.
Okay, thank you.
And if you'd like to accept this, please, for your correspondence or whenever.
Just in summary, so if we only have 22 active participants, why would we want to pay another town?
Right.
You know what I mean?
Okay.
If we can keep it going here, why pay another town and fork out that money?
Okay. All right, and as I had said either before, that we had not heard still from Rutland.
Yeah.
They never contacted us, but we're like the other two had.
Yeah.
And requested meetings. So, okay, very good. So we will discontinue our thought of merging?
All right.
And we'll continue as you have stated this evening. Okay, it sounds, it sounds workable.
I'm submitting those for inclusion in the minutes, please.
Yes. Do you want me to read it?
No.
No, okay.
Just what Claire said. So, and it's fleshed out with our reasoning as to why we can cut those things back.
Yeah, no, I have everything that you mentioned.
Okay.
That we've listed. Okay, very good. Thank you. I'll save this for correspondence. Okay. Okay, thank you very much for that update. Anyone else for public session? No? Okay. Highway superintendent contract is ready to be signed. What would the Board like to do about this? Everybody's got his chance. Have they all looked at it?
Yeah.
Patrick, would you like to come up here? Introduce yourself to everything, everybody. This is Patrick Marderosian. And he has been voted as being accepted as our highway superintendent. We have done the contract with him. He has had an opportunity to have to say what he would like to have in the contract.
This is the one.
Okay, and we have discussed it thoroughly and he has agreed to approve.
Yes.
The contract. So the Board would like to make a motion to?
Have Pat, my move that we have Pat sign the contract. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Patrick, you're still amenable to signing your Patrick for your new position or your contract for your new position?
Got my ten red.
Yeah. Patrick, would you like to sign your names?
Thank you. 10, 24, 29.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Happy to have you back aboard.
And we wish you the best of luck and we hope you enjoy your position.
Signature.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Congrats.
That way.
Patrick?
Do some homework.
Perfect, thank you.
We have the Emma or the Maya retiree renewal for the next fiscal year.
This is effective January 1st. Retiree plans get January 1st.
And current rate is $376.68. The renewal rate will be $453.23, which is an increase of 20% or 20.32%. What would the Board like to do with this form? I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah. I make a motion that we approve the rate increases for this is for this fiscal year, 25.
January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2025.
Yep. Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You sent this to, uh, Ford, I know. Okay.
Yeah.
Just for file going forward.
Next, we have the ambulance contract with Rutland. This is this renewal form. Our time was up for the past three years and this is the new contract. And Tim, our chief of the fire department is here on Zoom to go over it with us.
Good evening, everybody. Well, as you know, we've had this contract, well, since before I was chief to have Rutland provide our EMS service. It's been a phenomenal, I think, asset for the town. The response has been great. We haven't had any problems. You know, I do feel the cost is reasonable. We saw, we did ask the town of Rutland to provide the numbers of what, you know, they're actually making with billing and stuff like that. As you can see, the numbers, I think you have them there, right? You know, they're not getting rich off it. They're just barely covering expenses. But more importantly than any, the money aspect is just the service for the town. We've cut our response time down. I think we're right around the eight minute mark. They're so quick because they're on duty and they're there. Like when we get called, you know, I usually go or we send the rescue to go and they're still beating us and I'm coming from my house. So depending what side of town it is, they're getting in before I get there from my house, jumping right in my car and going. So it's a great service for the citizens, paramedic level, which the town has never had before. Again, the cost, again, I'm at work today, so I don't have the form in front of me, but I think what a couple, two or three grand a year, something like that went up. You have it in front of you there, but I think we should, we should sign. And the reason I brought this up is because of being expiring this year. I know it's budget season and I need to plan for my next, you know, next, next fiscal year. They did take out a little bit of language. One was about the ambulance because they used to have our old ambulance, but when that, yeah, that's gone. So that's irrelevant now. So that line is and they struck another line out there and, uh, Dawn, I think you read it to me the other day. Again, I'm at work, so I don't have it in front of me. It's in my office, but there was one other line which I think was irrelevant that they took out just to update the contract with any old language. And that was a oh, it was about taking the employees. It was about, yeah, so what it was, when they first took over to avoid the, the image of them taking over, they offered any former OCAM EMT, basically a, a call position with Rutland Fire. And all those people that were there when that happened have since moved on. They do still offer that. They've offered anyone who wants to work and go up there and get trained and be a call member, any of our EMTs that want to do it. So they'd still offer it, but it's not required for them to take anybody anymore.
Yeah.
No, I mean, in terms of numbers, if you look at it, to buy an ambulance, which the town needed to do before I took over, now it's almost $400,000 to $450,000 by the time you buy one and equip it. And again, you're only getting 10 years out of that. So that's 45 grand a year right there for that alone. You figure out over 10 year lifespan. You know, training, the staff, you know, and we don't have the staff, you know, I've been very fortunate. All my guys, not all, but I think I have six or seven that became EMTs this last year, which is great, but they don't have the time during the day. They have full-time jobs, so they can't be running back and forth to Worcester with an ambulance. So we'd have to hire staff and all that. So it would be an exorbitant amount for the town to take over the, the ambulance. And that would only be ALS, wouldn't even be ALS.
Any questions or comments?
No. I think it's, I'll snap.
I think it's very reasonable.
Yeah.
Name, copy that. Only the attorneys that sign if you vote.
Yep, echoes with this. Ready for motion?
I'm ready for motion.
All right, so I move that the that we sign the regional agreement, the ambulance service for the town of OCAM. And that'll be going forward from June 30th, Tim?
Yeah, yeah. So our current ones are done this June, but again, for budgeting, that's why I had to look because we have to plan our budget soon. So I want to make sure if we needed to find an alternative, we had time to do that before.
So it'll be effective July 1st?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so add that to the motion and the effective date of this.
It's effective July 1, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
Yep.
Yep.
Three years.
Ready to move? Ready to move?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Tim, will you, do you need a copy of this? Do you want me to email it? You'll pick it up.
Yeah, I've got the, I've got the draft, but if you want to send me a signed copy, I'll throw it in the file of the station, you know, email me. I can pick it up tomorrow, the next day, doesn't matter.
Okay.
I'll just keep it on file. Now, budget-wise, that, you is that a line item that goes in mine or is that in yours? I don't remember ever putting that in. I think it just automatically got.
I have luck.
I think so.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah.
Either way, I'll make sure I'll, I'll.
I think it's ours too. Yeah.
I'll make sure it gets, yeah, we don't, we won't forget about it.
We have guests this evening representing the OCAM New Braintree PTO. And they have a question and a slight problem at the school for the playground. It seems to be falling into disrepair and they would like to make a small presentation to the town about having it repaired. Ladies, please. And if you could introduce yourselves for the, we have to have it.
Tiffany Furnestine, North Brookfield Road.
Meg Chavai, 236 Bullard Road. So we are here representing the OCAM New Braintree Parent Teacher Organization. We have a couple of projects going on this year, looking at dating both the playground equipment and the blacktop where the basketball court is.
Thank you.
The main point of our, or the main purpose of us being here is understanding the ownership and financial responsibility of that paved area. It appears to be near 20 years old and that it's definitely showing some wear. There are cracks that are about five inches deep and about two inch, five inches wide and two inches deep throughout the length and width of the blacktop area. We have been told that that is town property. So we just want to make sure we understand how that can get repaired, replaced, and how to move forward with that.
Okay.
In the presentation, you can see it is roughly a 12,000 square foot area right now that's paved as it was the old parking lot at the school. But there could be discussions on how we could, you know, downsize that a little bit. We probably don't need that much blacktop for the kids.
Okay.
So yeah, our big concern right now is just child safety and then accessibility on the blacktop area, whether it may be wheelchairs or anything that's accessing that area. Tripping, falling, injuries, all of that. I guess before moving on, are we aware that that paving is indeed town property and how would we get approval for something like that?
You paying for it?
We are working on some projects for funding the playground itself. It could be something we could look into in terms of updating like the basketball hoops and things like that, but I think the actual paving.
I think the question is whose responsibility is it? Hi, I'm Trisha Worthington, the principal at OCAM.
Hi, Ken.
I don't think any, none of us really know whose responsibility it is and it's actually becoming a hazard to the students. So we just need clarification on that as well.
Okay. I, I feel that it's ours.
Yeah, at the end of the day, it is definitely.
Trish, wouldn't this come under the regional school agreement that any repairs that is due to the school that's over $5,000 falls upon the responsibility to the town and then the school notifies the town and then we would vote for it in the school budget as, as a a repair item. Usually we had our representatives on the school committee say that we need to have this repair, like when we needed a new oven, things of that nature that they would, it would be put on as far as the school budget and we would vote on it, usually as a article on the warrant.
Well, in all honesty, I think we're just coming because this is all new to us. And we have, we finally have another active PTO who's trying to help out in the playground. So our first step was to find out whose responsibility it was. That was our first step. And then we'd go from, from there. We don't even know what the cost would be. So we didn't know if it was us that would, I mean, if you, if it's the responsibility of a town, I would assume they're the ones that would add, look for what the cost would be. But we're just looking for clarification, that's all.
Have you, have you talked with Cheryl Duval at all? Because usually in the past, what would happen was?
Yeah, Cheryl Duval retired.
Oh, my God. Okay, well, I understand now. So it would be, is Claire still there?
No, Claire's not. It's all new.
Oh, my God. Okay, so the person who directed the grounds and maintenance of the schools.
Kevin Clark.
Would, okay, would get an estimate and then based upon the estimate, they would say, according to the regional agreement, it falls upon the town of OCAM. And then they would, you know, it would come to us as an item that we would vote for on the warrant for repair for the school, right?
Yes, I understand all of that. We were just coming to the select board just to get clarification of how they wanted us to proceed.
Okay.
Get estimates.
The what? Oh, you'll, we'll need estimates and we'll ask.
Yes, I can contact Kevin. I'm assuming that something of that nature would probably be over I don't know. Well, definitely $5,000 would fall on the town's responsibility.
It'll be over that.
But even possibly the $10,000 threshold for three open bit, you know, three open quotes. So for procurement purposes, so Kevin, I can contact Kevin just to see, initiate the estimate process.
Yeah.
I know that at a former school committee meeting, I asked the question in regards to, for procurement purposes, does it fall under the town to solicitate the quotes or the bids depending on the threshold? And I was under the impression that it does, the school can get those quotes as they are, you know, equipped. Most, a lot of towns in, I don't know, in our area don't have a procurement officer. So I worked with Kevin, having that, those requirements just to make sure that we cover all bases. So I'll be more than happy to contact him and.
Mary Bell?
Yes.
Just for history, because I went to those meetings for 10 years.
Sure.
You know, the regional school district always got the quotes.
Well, that's where I got the clarification, but it was kind of like, I'm not sure. Yeah.
Then they would come to us as a town and say, the best quote is this.
Sure, makes sense.
Yeah, and then we would say, okay, we're going to put, make sure we get it on the warrant so that it can be.
I know with like the water heater because of ARPA funds at that time, we, the town didn't have to, or the board didn't have to go that route, obviously because there were funds, but something of a higher nature and a higher ticket would make sense to be on a warrant and approved as an article.
Yeah.
Moving forward if the Board chooses to.
In all honesty, I think we also were trying to save the town some money and didn't know maybe if one of the department of, you know, well, Mr. Blackworks, if they wanted to look at it and see if they could just patch it up. So we're just trying to help out.
Sure. Okay.
That's an option too, to have it assessed that way.
Yeah.
Going forward.
It's, it's more than paving. It's the equipment.
The labor.
There's pictures here of broken pieces.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that was part of our next.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
As you stated, the, the orig, the asphalt is the original parking lot before the addition was put on.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah.
So, I mean, that's probably fifty years old.
Mm hmm.
Um, so then.
Use that for basketball, right?
They do.
On the.
For back.
Yeah, the kids. They can't really do much right now because of all the cracks and the, the whole bent, but, um, so there's not much basketball going on, but they do use it.
Okay.
Um.
Now the highways, we take a look at it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if you're gonna, yeah.
We'll follow through on it. See what we can come up with, see that we can get a cost, contact the school. Okay. And so we go from there and go keep in touch with you so that you can keep up to date with us.
Now, Pat, I'm sure the playground equipment would have to be approved by the district as to meeting certain codes and standards, et cetera.
Actually, um, the PTO has, we've been working with three different companies and, um, they've come out and looked at the equipment and the equipment, actually, they said is in fine shape. Their, their PTO was just looking to add on. Um, like a, a piece of equipment here, a piece of equipment there. So I think what the point of coming today is to sit, make sure that was okay with you as a town's, um, representation, that it's okay that if they find a piece of equipment that you're fine with them putting it on. Of course, we'll go through all the legality with, uh, what needs to happen and okayed by Kevin and all that, but we just want permission to make sure that it's okay with the town people since it is your property.
Like the, the third page is the equipment that we had three different companies come out and check. Um, so there's just some repairs that.
That need to be.
Um, but then we wanted to add like additional equipment. Perhaps a different feature, like a spinny feature or something that's kind of separate from the current connected playground where it is right now. Um, and we just, if it is your, you know, prop, the town of Old Camp's property, we just want that approval and make sure we're not, you know, doing anything that's not, oh, need to move forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with seeing what we can do.
Okay.
And get it done and get it so it is safe. That's the big thing. Yes, that's something that you guys have fundraising for or for those additional costs.
Yes, um, for the playground equipment itself, we will be doing fundraising and perhaps grant applications, um, to try to get some solid funds to make these upgrades and modifications. We've had three companies come out so far and looked and give us some pricing.
Good. The more information we get, the, the better and the easier.
Yes, they gave us lots of prices, lots of options. Yeah. Stick your shot for sure. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the update on that. And, and what you need, we will try to get the best we can. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Comments?
No, we'll, we'll get back with you and we have the highway look at it, see what their assessment is, is to they think.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you again.
Yes, you too.
In our packet, we have a copy of the social media policy. We need to review it and look at Facebook accounts. My suggestion would be that we each take the packets home, read them on our own, make any changes that we think necessary. And then come back and discuss the final rendition of the copy.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, with everybody on that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay. Chief Garing, Traffic Complaints and Traffic Speed Trailer Police Chief.
So I have some data here that we collected from the sign and I'd like to start off by some of that's, uh, log printouts of citations and stops that we made over the period of time.
If I can, Lucy, this is, um, in reference to the meeting we had last summer.
For the, yeah, for the.
Northbrook Field Road.
Right.
Okay.
So it's not additional complaints since that time?
Right, no, I.
We're looking at.
Yeah, it's a following.
Yeah.
So this is a follow-up information and the data I collected from the time period from when they complained till today. So what we had is we, uh, during that time from eight, one to ten, twenty nine, we had a total of sixty motor vehicle stops in town, fifty-three of which were conducted on Northbrook Field Road. And the area of, uh, concern was down by South Road between South Road and Robinson. The thirty-five mile per hour zone. So our approach was to saturate that area, running radar, make a number of stops, give out some citations, either written warnings, verbal warnings, or CMVI's, which are payable offenses. So like I said, fifty-three of those stops were made, uh, just in that area alone, sixty total from August first till now. Some of the takeaways from the information we got from the radar sign were actually pretty good. And this may be shocking because I was a little shocked to see this number myself. A total of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-five vehicles passed by the sign from ten, one to ten, twenty-five. That's just a month of October. Most drivers on the road were traveling in ranges of thirty-three to thirty-eight miles per hour and thirty-nine to forty-four miles per hour at their highest recorded speeds. The percentage of drivers with their lowest recorded speeds, uh, the largest group of that was thirty-three miles to thirty-eight miles per hour for that zone. So it looks to me with the sign and the running radar and handing out citations has had a big impact on that area. It slowed them down pretty good. Uh, the speed limit being thirty-five mile per hour, it, it tracks with what we're doing. Uh, the metrics indicate the following. Eighty-five percentile of speeders that were over, say forty-three for their, uh, highest speeds and forty mile per hour for their lowest speeds. So it looks like about ten percent of the total number of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-five were forty plus miles an hour up to forty-three miles per hour. Average speeds, uh, for the, the total time were thirty-eight miles per hour for the highest and thirty-four for the lowest. So they, it is working. People are slowing down. And regarding vehicles with speed above forty mile, five miles per hour, ten miles per hour or above, like I said, was only in about the ten percentile of all vehicles that travel past the sign. Uh, lowest speeds dropped to five hundred and twenty-two, which means one thousand, five hundred and thirteen vehicles slowed to below forty-five miles per hour during that period of time. So the offenders, which are a percentage of that twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-five has dropped down to below ten percent. Which before that, I'm not sure what the, the metrics were before that, but I'm sure it was much higher because we were getting a lot of complaints, uh. I think the saturation with radar down there actually did a, a good job at slowing them down.
How do the residents feel down there?
They're very happy that we stepped up.
Are they feeling safer now?
Yes, they are. But they were very happy that we were down there showing a presence and making stops and, and so now it's, uh, it's down to a controlled level of speed.
Right.
Where it's supposed to. Part of the problem is Northbrook Field Road, it's forty miles an hour in the Braintree, switches to thirty-five, goes back to forty.
Forty.
And then switches back to thirty-five for Lake Dean and then goes back to forty again. So people will set their cruise control already speeding.
Yeah.
Forty-five, fifty miles per hour and just continue right through to thirty-five at higher rates of speed. So hopefully we've, uh, brought them to the realization that that's not a good idea.
They still had seven that were between fifty-seven and sixty-two miles an hour.
We did. Yeah, we did. I mean, it's still going to be those people that just don't care and they're gonna, they're gonna go that fast with seven vehicles out of twenty-nine, twenty-nine thousand. That's pretty good. That's out.
What's dinner for?
I'll, I'll take that.
Very good. I thought of this thought.
So that's basically it, uh, at this point. Um, I think the saturation has worked down there and, uh, we're going to continue to monitor the speeds down there, but running stationary radar down there has had a huge impact. And sitting down there now, we're not getting the speeds that we were. We're not even getting the motor vehicle stop speeds that we would, you know, stop them at. So I, I usually let eight to twelve over the speed limit, then we'll stop them. And I know Kevin's right around ten miles an hour over the speed limit, we'll stop them. Educational, give them a verbal warning, maybe a written warning. If, uh, there are other indicators why they need a ticket, then we'll issue a citation at that time.
Is there a timeframe involved in that living there? We know that early morning it's fast.
So, yeah, anything.
At night, it, it's fast.
Yeah. After midnight and before, before seven AM, it's usually higher speeds. I'll, I'll agree with that.
And community time almost slows it down because of the volume.
It doesn't, it doesn't. I mean, uh, there's times I've sat down there, two thirty, three o'clock, four o'clock in the afternoon and still grabbed somebody right on one forty-eight by the lake doing sixty miles an hour. That's happened. Yeah, there, there have been speeds that high. Yep. The average speed down there for speeding is probably forty-seven in the, in the, uh, Lake Dean area.
Right.
Yeah.
Same rough numbers on Turnpike Road. I mean, obviously the sign isn't out there to track it, but.
Right. So on Old Turnpike Road, um, before we concentrated on Northbrook Field Road, I was up there and in the morning hours, it's a complete opposite because you have the state police going to the academy every day. And so you try to make a motor vehicle stop in the morning. I went up there real early one morning, like five thirty, six o'clock. I started stopping cars that were ten, twelve over and three troopers would stop to back me up. So it was kind of crazy. Um, so in the morning, we're not getting the, the high speeds on Old Turnpike. It's probably it's roughly between, uh, nine to probably four or five in the afternoon, you get the higher speeds, but the traffic isn't as bad. The average speed on Old Turnpike is probably fifty if they're speeding. And normally forty-five if they're not, and the speed limit's posted forty.
So what would you say most of the, the stops are residents or non-residents?
On Old Turnpike?
Yeah.
I would say non-residents.
Passing through.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that people, that, that's a, uh, it's like a highway to get to, uh, Warren or, uh, Ware or Hardwick. So all the people that are working, you know, in the east are coming over Old Turnpike. Most of the traffic though is going in, not out. We get a lot in early morning hours out, but most of the day it's in. So they're heading towards Hardwick most of the day.
Good.
I'd say late at, late at night and early in the morning, we're getting the, the higher traffic heading eastbound.
You can actually move that trailer on any road and get the speeds and the number of cars?
Yes.
Good deal.
Which one you want to do that?
Rely on the state for that.
No, we can get the, uh, we can get the numbers. Wherever we put that sign, we can get the data. The only problem is the raw data, which I was given last week. If you looked at it, you'd be like, what is this? I can't read it. So you have to depend on the Department of Transportation to interpret the data, convert it to you and send it over.
Okay.
So some of that data I got from them had to be converted first.
Okay.
So if you're looking at that paperwork, you'll see where it tells you the numbers. Yeah, Mike's got it right there. It tells you the numbers. That's all conversion from the actual raw data. I had a thumb drive full of data, but when I read it, it was like reading Greek.
Yeah.
I couldn't understand it.
Zeros and ones?
Yeah, pretty much. And so, uh, we sent the raw data in last week and I asked that they convert it. And the lady was able to convert it and get it back to me yesterday. So she did it pretty quick and I, they love it when you talk numbers to them. That's all they do. But it's interesting, uh, they, they will convert any data that we give them regardless of where the sign is. You know, we do have to follow DOT's rules and put the sign where they tell us to for certain periods of time, which is usually three weeks at a whack. So we leave that there for three weeks, download the data, upload it to them and they're happy.
Okay.
Other than that, the, it's, uh, three weeks at a whack and I think it's four times a year or five times a year. And then the rest of the time it's ours. We can put it anywhere we want, record any data we want.
So pretty much at your discretion, you.
Yeah.
We'll do the, the next one and the next one is you think you have a problem.
Right. So when we moved it down to where it is or it was currently for that thirty-five mile per hour zone between South and Robinson, that was at our discretion.
Right.
They don't require it to be there. Where they require it to be is down by the cemetery on one forty-eight. That's the, the spot that they picked.
So did you have to zero it when you moved it?
No, it's automatic.
Okay.
It automatically zeros out. Um.
So did you lose the data near the cemetery or?
No, we downloaded that before we moved it.
Okay, so you have that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. No.
That's already been shipped off to them.
Okay.
I'm sure it's going to read pretty much the same because we didn't just sit in that area. We, we concentrated there, but we did a lot of radar all over one forty-eight for that time period because it's not just that thirty-five mile per hour zone. That's a problem. To Barbara's credit, she brought it up and it's Lake Dean area is a big problem too.
Yeah.
And, uh, I spent a, uh, inordinate amount of time down there running radar down at the old, uh, package store. Or garage, which, which old garage.
Which, yeah.
So I'm sure everybody's seen me sitting there from time to time. Now? Barbara has.
I have, I have. Guilty as charged.
I think it'll change Old Turnpike when you open up the green road.
Yeah, it might.
I think it'll be a big change.
Yeah. Well, right now they, they're diverting traffic up Hardwick Road and they're coming out onto sixty-seven and they're coming down Old Turnpike anyway. So I don't think that's really going to matter. Anybody that's changed their minds about, uh, using Old Turnpike is probably on the far side of Hardwick and they're probably going down Route nine.
Well, I think a lot of people stay on one twenty-two and go all the way to Berry and cut.
Yeah, they could do that too.
Yeah.
I, I have noticed an uptick in traffic on one twenty-two. We don't spend a, a lot of time out there running radar, but when we do, I have noticed that there's a lot more traffic.
What's the, uh, status of the, uh, drone?
So currently I'm, uh, in the study phase and I'm going to be testing soon for that. So I'm working with Semlec, um, for direction. And there's a guy in Auburn that's kind of like the head of the whole program for drones. So he's going to actually come out and we're going to do, uh, flight testing and all that stuff. And he's going to teach us exactly how to use it. So we don't wind up crashing it.
Yeah, please don't. Yeah, please don't. I'll turn it over to you.
The uh.
Okay. 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 Next on the agenda. I I think, I don't know. Might be, it might be. Okay. We're going to need to do an appointment tonight or choose somebody to be the. ADA Coordinator. Michael.
For in its central mass regional planning. And I. Escapes me there. Their little group.
For the um vulnerability plans that we've been working on for the past.
For the whole town.
Yes, so in order to be compliant for future. Grant, we had to have this study done for open phase for culverts. We went working with, that's when Janet Pierce from CMR PC had come. So we had been working with um. This group. For well over a year. I know Phil and Tom. And Mike and myself have been on this.
So, yeah, so where we're at is we need an ADA Coordinator for the town. In past years, it was Jeff Young. Uh, when he was on the Board of Selectmen. And. For this to.
Go to the next steps.
Go to the next step within the. What they're doing. Get to appoint somebody as the ADA Coordinator and that will basically consist of going around with them. And looking at. Town buildings. Um.
All town structures.
The ball field.
Different locations.
Um. That they would like to um. Basically town proper.
And it's part of their study to, you know.
And they'll be filing a report on what they find.
Correct.
And what their recommendations would be or what funding might be available for. And then correct something or um.
And once this is concluded, the town will have. Bigger opportunities for grants.
Grants.
Through CMR PC. Um. So. And again, in this pro this study that's being done was off of a grant, so it was at no cost. Uh, monetary cost to the town. But it's been a lot of hours.
What would the board like to do?
Well, we can appoint Lucy. Or we can appoint Don or we can appoint me to be the uh.
Oh, it has to be one of us.
Okay. It was kind of the recommendation that.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to be, but it's.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Unless we know of somebody that. Love to delve into that.
No, no problem.
Um, Hughes already told me no.
ADA Coordinator, that's no.
You game for that or?
Of course.
All right, I second the motion.
Of course. No, I'd be more than happy to do that.
It is. Yeah, so.
We don't have any dates, though, or times when they're going to be ready to do something.
Uh, yeah.
Something with not ten foot of snow out there.
I think it's going to be a fairly quick. You know. Drive around, walk around.
Okay.
Does this go along with the um? The survey about like the town building and?
No, that's something different. Yeah.
Okay.
Did we vote?
We're gonna vote. We're gonna vote.
You made the motion. He seconded, of course. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, next, uh, we need to do some evaluations of some employees of the town. Consisting of the Fire Chief. Police Chief, Treasurer Collector and the Administrative Assistant to the Board of Selectmen. There are. Four, we need to set up four dates to do their evaluations. I'm not too pressed on time, so I can usually fill in whenever you're available, both of you. And Maribel has to be available too. Especially on that last one. Chief, when would you like to have your reevaluation?
Just pick a time, I'll be here.
Um.
Fred's got vacation submitted.
Yeah.
Well, I was going to say about somewhere around November fifth.
November fifth is election day.
Yeah, I know. Are you going to be around?
I guess I will. Be around all day.
I'm sure you will be.
I think we should spread this out a little bit.
Yeah.
One per month? Two per month? Okay.
Give them time to.
Yeah.
Get bearings. Feedback to us.
Do you want to start in November?
Bring the calendar up.
Right. Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
It's December.
Beginning of December, yeah. Tim, do you have a preference?
No, I mean, if you want, we want to go like every other week. I'm around like eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. I'm around all four of those days of that week. Unless you want me to go further out.
I'm fine with any of the dates. Okay, good.
Right. All those dates.
Okay.
That's the week before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Right. Michael might be out of town, so.
Yeah, I mean, I I think those are going to be all right as far as for Tim eighteen, nineteen. What what day is twenty-one? That's a Thursday.
Twenty-one's a Thursday.
Yeah, so those three probably those would be good for me.
Okay.
Tim.
Which uh, I'll put in my calendar right now if you know.
Eighteenth.
Start with him in the eighteenth.
Yeah, no, you got.
Eighteenth? That's fine.
Winter's. School committee meeting in November.
Oh, gosh. Oh, hold on. Um.
So we don't have it on foot there if we have the.
Well, what day of the week is that? Eighteenth is a Monday, so that doesn't affect me, but does it affect depending on when the board is doing the meeting? Is it a, is it a?
Um, is it one of our regular meetings?
No, yes, no, it's not.
It's not.
It's not.
We're gonna have, we'll be meeting the twelfth. Because Monday, the eleventh is.
Right, so eighteenth is not a. It's a regular meeting week.
So it's it's a bop meeting. We could do two that night.
I know that Police Chief usually, do you have Mondays? I know that the Treasurer is here Monday evenings.
I'll come in Monday for it, that's fine.
I could do the fifth also. I'm fine with the fifth, too, if you want. Whatever you want, the same as Fred's there, okay? I already voted, so I vote all day free.
You can't hold a meeting on voting day. See what you started, Lucy.
I'm good with the.
Eighteenth is good for me. Eighteenth, we'll do the eighteenth.
Do I do the fifth?
No.
No, no, no.
She was being funny.
I'll do the eighteenth as well, if that's.
That's what I was thinking. Do both of you on the eighteenth?
Yeah.
Can we go together like one question at a time back and forth?
Who wants to go first? And then. The next. I that it's our meeting nights that would be in DC.
Will this be um November eighteenth at what time? At six PM? Or is it evening hours or day hours?
I'm good either.
That meeting.
What do you want?
I don't care. I can ju- I can ju-. I can do either. Uh.
That's not a regular meeting day, no. So.
Day hours.
I I have no objections. Anytime that day.
Do one and two. One and two.
Hey.
That's good.
And who's one? Fire Chief?
Sure.
He's first.
Fire was first.
All right.
Just so you guys know, this is an open meeting. This evaluation is an open meeting. It's going to be recorded.
Sounds like we're getting yelled at, Tim.
I can't wait.
We can do that anytime.
All right, I have one o'clock of the eighteenth. That'll be the.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll be fine. Treasurer Collector and. Admin Assistant. Your classes are going to be done.
Yes.
On Fridays, yeah, yeah, should be all set to go.
Twenty-second, that Friday.
What's a good date?
Twenty-second, what? Isn't that?
After.
I can't, the sixth.
I just said that, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, she won't be able to.
Well, let's do it on Friday the thirteenth.
Ooh, that's a good one.
Lucky numbers. I like it.
Early in the morning. She's here very early.
Nine and ten. Makes it easy.
Nine o'clock.
And the same thing, there'll be regular open meetings.
Of course.
On Zoom.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, preliminary discussion of FY twenty-six budget and DLS recommendations. So those recommendations have all been put online. And they're available to everybody in town.
That's the full report.
Yep.
Gone, any input on that that you'd like to offer? Preliminary. I have. I have not been in touch with the. Uh, FinCom for quite a while.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask you.
Yeah, they haven't. I think they only had one meeting very, very early this month. So there what point they're at right this moment, I don't know. I know they've gone through everything. They've been very studious about doing everything.
Why don't we send them an email, see if they got their schedule and how they do that schedule?
Yes.
That'd be good.
Yeah, okay.
Did we send them this?
No.
No, okay, no.
And I don't even know what they have set up for a meeting for this month's. I I don't know the date of it.
For November? Well, I I know I posted their agenda last time.
Oh.
So. Unless they've done it themselves this time. I haven't heard anything.
Send them an email. See if they got their schedule. They usually send it to us, but.
They do, yeah, yeah, okay.
And just to top it off with um. Budget discussion really quick, just tomorrow will be the first of four meetings held with the Quabon Regional District. And preparations for the fiscal twenty-six budget. Uh, FinCom Board of Selectmen members are encouraged to attend. So. I will be attending. Anyone can attend for the matter. Um. And I know.
I'll be attending.
Will be attending.
I will definitely be attending.
Michael will be attending. So I and 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 I sent it to FinCom. I never heard back, which I don't necessarily need to, but I just don't know if they're in or not in attendance. Um. But. There are four scheduled. They're all. You know, uh, October, December. February and April. I think it's really important with, as you know, for OKM to. To be in attendance as much as.
Yeah.
As they can.
Who of our members are going to be attending? Do we have to post?
No, because you will not be, um, they did not say that it had to be posted. Um, no meeting had to be posted. She's usually pretty good about saying.
So it's informational.
Yes.
Decisions made.
Yeah, school committee members.
They'll sit on the other side of the room.
They will be posting a meeting for the school committee members.
Okay.
But, yeah.
If I'm back in time, I'll zoom. To that meeting.
Okay. Any other new business? None?
Nope.
None? Okay.
New business or old business?
Old business. Well, Claire did a very good on the update of possible senior center regionalization, but you've decided not to do it.
No, I don't think it's worth your money. I'm afraid you're going to spend more money for. Twenty-two people, then find out they don't even go, right? That's like a waste.
Okay, so we'll stop if they're calling us to say set up a meeting with them. We'll just say, I'm sorry, it's off the table.
Right.
Okay. That's very good. Thank you. Update on Charter Spectrum Agreement. Any concession from them?
No response, I think, from council today first.
No response yet, okay.
That's uh.
And any update on Skyline Drive?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Phil's here. Yeah. Well, if you want to sit up here, Phil probably be better.
Sure. Um. Little Orbast, he's still rolling for the planning board. The package that we submitted is a. Um, a download from the registry of deeds. With the deed chain and what we discovered is that the lot. Number seven, the the drainage easement is shown on the plan. Um. It was included in the. Three deeds, it appeared on the deeds. So the text says, subject to drainage easements, as shown on said plan. Plans are included in this package. Um, and then the last person to sell the. That lot to the current owner. Um, omitted that text. So the man who owns that lot now. According to this, this chain of deeds did not know that the easement was on his property, even though it had been on previous deeds. So um, I gather that we've been pushing that owner. When we should now look at the previous owner. Um, second page, we we look at remedying this by what's called a corrective deed. Um, it's prepared. Probably by Kip Copeland and Page, but it must be signed by the original grant law. So the one that sold that lot to the current owners will need to sign that deed once it's prepared. And um, our recommendation is however the process works. Good Row should pay the cost, whatever cost there is to the town. Even to the or owner of that lot.
The other thing we found was there was um. The document of restrictions and covenants.
Yes.
With the original developer.
Right.
Which also clearly stated in its text that was filed, you know, with the Worcester County deeds. Um. In re- in regards to easements, um, drainage easements. Roads, you know, just different, all the standard things that. And. This lot did have that covenant. Um. Referenced with one of the deeds going back.
Yes.
So there there is a paper trail.
Right.
But. In the last instance, it's. Been omitted.
Right.
So. We haven't heard from. Town Council.
We did in the the last correspondence was. Um. What she heard in response from the current resident there. Um. Again, it goes back to. Attorney fees, which is a monetary expense. Um. And how to proceed. And how to proceed from there, or with now this new discovery, which direction or to move forward as that resident doesn't know, or that own homeowner didn't know this easement that had been.
Right.
On three prior deeds, and then on his, it's, that warden is no longer in existence.
But the grantor alone who sold it to him left that out. And what we found interesting was the omission of that text was not caught in, in any of three title searches. So for the current owner, when the current owner's title search was done for him, they missed it. When the search was done for Como's attorney, by his, by his attorney, they missed it. And then when KP Law, our town council supposedly did a title search, they missed the fact that it had been in three deeds and then omitted from the, the most recent one.
It was, yeah, recently discovered, but just very recent.
Let's go by name.
Yes.
Does the current owner have title insurance for that transaction?
I don't know.
That's a title insurance claim.
That would be good. That'd be good.
Sure, if he has it. Is there a mortgage on that property? If there's a mortgage on that property, there would be title insurance required by the mortgage.
So we can look at the registry and see if there's a mortgage. Yeah, good.
So that's kind of. We found the information this weekend. That, so, so now it's a question of how we proceed with Town Council and Planning Boards kind of, you know, Phil's recommendation is
To place it if that wants.
To get it corrected. Corrected deeds, and then where that would go, we don't know. Yeah. I mean, it will go through, but we don't know.
We can ask Town Council, what's the process? Do they prepare a corrective deed or confirmatory deed? And if they prepare it, then how do they get Goodrow to sign it as the grantor?
Right. If at all, and this is hypothetical, but if it, if it comes to a conclusion that way, I think the best option would be to finish the planning board process and then go to a town meeting to accept. Instead of any other option. Go the, the route that's been planned for
Yes.
twenty years or more. For the subdivision, roads.
So do we know at this point if I, I, who's gonna submit it to the town, to the selectmen? Will that be from Kip Copeland and Page, or will that be from Sunny's attorney?
I asked Town Council, what would the process be for the correction of this deed, or what were, what would the next steps be? And she mentioned that, as mentioned previously, since the original deed did not reserve any easement in the and then the easement appears for no apparent reason in one of the deeds, only to be removed in the next deed, it is not clear from a title matter that this property is subject to easement.
Is that sure in Everett? All wrong.
Yeah.
All wrong.
And what we found this weekend was the developer, when he issued, issued the original title on that lot, everything was in order.
Yeah, it was in order through three successive deeds. The, the language is in there for three deeds. And then when the last one, Goodrow, sold it to Nance, it was omitted.
So she proceeded to ask the question that she can send it to the current homeowner on that lot, can send a copy of that deed and assert we have an easement, and see what he says. So she's asking if, if the board would like for her to do that. Of course, I responded by saying you guys would discuss it, and I can let her know whatever the board decides moving forward. But could be her next step.
This, this seems to make it clear, though, it's not really the, the, it's not up to the current owner. He was misled, I think.
I think we have the right to complete the whole project, because the original subdivision is an on file at the registry of deeds.
Yeah.
Well, that's all valid. I mean, how that happened to his deed is questionable, but you really shouldn't stop us in doing any of this.
So the question then is, how do we get the subdivision package to the selectmen so that they can flow into the planning board and we can report right back?
Well. KP. That's still gonna fall on the town's attorneys.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
Because then it would become, whether it's presented or not, and that resident, like you said, wasn't aware. He can fight it from his angle, saying, this is mine. This is not on my deed, you know, and, and it can be a mistake, clearly.
Can I just tune in here?
Oh, Lucy?
Yeah.
Yes.
Buyer, beware. It's the buyer's responsibility to do their own due diligence when they're buying a piece of real property. If they hire someone to do the title search and there's an error, then they, their recourse is against the person that did the title search for them. Right? I think the town is in the right position. You have a plan that's recorded. The plan is what controls. It overrides a legal written description.
Yes.
So if the easement is in the plans, too bad current owner, so sad, they have a problem. And I don't think we should make it our problem. You know, that's always my position.
But would that be, then if the town needed to go on his property for any drainage that, you know, what, where would that fall?
That would be later.
Okay.
That would not be right now.
Right, yeah.
That would not be until we have a town meeting vote.
Okay.
With the paperwork correct.
It just would seem that we could proceed with this whole thing.
I wouldn't.
Because, because it is valid.
We, we can definitely proceed with it, but we need to get the package.
The, the deed needs to be corrected. That's the first step. Now, whether.
Is that what council is saying?
Not, not yet. That's basically the conclusion that Phil and I came up with. It's the only way to proceed forward is to correct the deed in this one, in one instance, because it is in.
But the issue is between the current owner and the previous owner, really. How did that happen? Why did it happen?
Well, my understanding is you can't correct the deed.
Yes.
Even though you're not a party of. It's, it's really, the town is like over here, and all this is here.
Right.
And the roads and the easement are the only thing holding up accepting this. Now, the roads that's kind of been resolved to, I think, an acceptable level for the planning board, because we've had the two sign-offs of the two parties there. So.
Yeah, the boundaries are all set.
Yeah.
But the board does not want to accept the roads, because then if this easement is in litigation.
But it'd be in litigation in a way, because it's already on file. And that whole stuff.
Until it's straight.
Predicated on all of that.
Right, but until it's straightened out.
The issue is between the current owner and the past owner.
But, but the town really can't take ownership of any of it until this is settled.
What do you think, Phil?
Well, it still seems to me that the top of the list is to get the, get a package submitted to the town. And once that happens, it comes to the planning board, we can turn it right around with a report to recommend acceptance. We have forty-five days, but I think we could do that.
Doing the top of the meeting, probably.
Uh, no more than two meetings.
Who would turn in the packet, though, for the votes?
That's, that's still the question. Who's responsible for that? Is that, is that Sunny Como's attorney? Because they, again, I guess they have been pulling it all together so far.
I mean, I, I, I would think so with the original developers, chapter seven. I, I don't know how you can go back at that.
Um, that was resolved last April, though. KMP told us that that Secretary of State revived OKM Sand and Gravel so that they could convey any remaining interest.
Right, but which was the road?
Which was the road, yeah.
Right.
Other than that.
Because of the town.
Convey it to, they convey it to the town of OKM, but it hasn't been formally submitted to us yet?
Yeah.
Or is it, did he convey it to, was that conveyance passed on to Como's attorney as part of the package that they were supposed to submit to the town? And where's KP in all this? They've not been pushing.
Maybe we'll hear back in six months.
Yeah.
Keeps going on or not in this problem.
It does. It, it has.
It feels like it's the same song and dance.
Yes.
And you know, every email, every phone call, it's an expense that keeps acting up.
We have this weekend identified the problem. And pinned it down.
Yeah.
To exactly what happened with this. Now, straightening it out. I think the only option is, is basically Phil's suggestion that you have to correct the deed. So need to get a hold of Turin and see if they have the wherewithal or.
And keep it in mind that if this.
Can they do it?
Right, and, and on top of that, anything that has to do with the current homeowner, everything he wants to do, he wants the town to cover all his attorney fees. You know, that, so that's another layer of how to proceed, you know? There is a cap. It wasn't, you know, okay, we can do it that cap possibly. If it's less, great, but if it's more, everything will stop there until the town agrees to pay, you know, I mean, I get.
That may not even arise.
Exactly. So according to this, we don't have to bother that current owner at all. And as far as the situation with KP Law, since we've had so much trouble getting more than a runaround from the current person assigned to us, should we put some pressure on Lauren as the head person?
Lauren's gonna get two emails, Charter and Skyline Drive.
Yeah, she is.
So if it's corrected, just from my understanding, if it gets corrected, is that something that then is presented to the current owner on that property, saying this is your, like, how does that shift his deed? Do you know what I mean?
Yes, yeah.
Is it like, here's your new deed?
Uh, yeah, my, my impression from looking into this is that KP would prepare the deed. Goodrow would, would be required to sign it as the grantor. They're the ones that sold the lot to Nance. And once that's done, then Nance gets a copy of that corrected deed, and the light goes on that he is subject to an easement. It's on the plan already, as Barbara said, but here's the corrected paper that says, subject to easement on your property.
It's not gonna fly.
Lucy.
It's not gonna fly. It, it's not gonna work. He's not gonna accept the deed, I think.
Well, Nance doesn't have to accept it, because he.
Who's the current owner? I don't know the name.
The current, the current owner is Nance, and he was, sold the property by Goodrow. Goodrow was the one who, for whatever reason, omitted that text from the deed.
Okay.
Conveying it to Nance.
The grantee got a bogus deed.
Yes, he did.
Okay. That person needs to be notified. If they have title insurance, they must notify their title insurance company. And the title insurance company will pay his legal fees.
Is that where we start then?
I would start there.
Notify Nance that he got a bogus deed.
Different one.
I.
Yeah.
Good. And should we, what can that as the next step?
That's my suggestion.
That easement for the town.
Yep. If he's looking for the town to pay for his mistake.
Right.
No way.
Right.
No.
Well, it isn't, it isn't.
The bank.
It isn't the grantor that's looking for the town.
It's the current owner. It's, but his title company, his title search company would be responsible?
Yes.
Uh, okay.
If he has mortgage on it, the bank would require title insurance.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The banks are the ones that are gonna be up and out over it. They're gonna be questioning everything.
But it, it would still have to come from Town Council to initiate.
The law in their court.
Exactly.
It would have to be initiated by Town Council for the notification.
So they would have to notify Nance that he got.
Or Goodrow.
There's an error in the deed. And if you have title insurance, it's highly recommended that you notify ASAP, because that's when, once it becomes aware of it, that's when the clock starts ticking.
So if the town were to give Nance this information, can tell them to contact your company?
Sure.
Your title insurer?
Yeah, it would have, it's like I say, have to go through Town Council to contact them.
And. And.
At that time. I saw. I saw where.
Actually, the bed.
I saw where it's dead.
They can't trade it all.
The property.
Keep it as a private road.
He's owner, so he just. No title research.
I didn't want to leave it on.
This here is.
Anyone. Oh, yeah, you can.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm more.
I don't even remember them.
They bought the lots.
You just. The names. The connect them. Unmute them.
Yes.
Correct.
No, I know. What I'm saying is between Goodrow and this guy. I don't know how an attorney can. The paper said that no title search. It was agreed. That's what I'm trying to find. That's what I'm trying to find. I just don't know.
Think it work out on the phone.
Now, this John Goodrow was the grantor.
Yeah, I know him.
In the trust.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, him, I don't know. I shouldn't say that. He's the one I know.
He's the one that lived there.
Yeah. It was on the ancient, and, and I don't know what paper I saw it on. But I, I commented on it. Oh, that no title search was made.
Yeah, I think it was in the one that.
That's what I'm looking for.
I don't think it's in that one, was it?
I would think it would be in this packet somewhere. Let me see, hold on.
These are OKM Sand and Gravel's covenants.
Yeah, I see a different lawyer.
This dates back to two thousand.
Yeah.
Well, I suggest we get to stand.
Doing all of this observation commission.
Get a hold of, it's really not the town's problem at this point. I mean, are we, we gonna be followed again this year?
The page isn't in here.
Well, the other thing we found out was, was was voted in nineteen sixty-three in Master of Law, Chapter Forty, Section Six C, and we voted F, I believe. Well, F was repealed in nineteen seventy-seven by the legislature. So. Whatever replaced that, we may have to go to town meeting to vote the new verbiage.
You thought it to plow it?
Well, it really has to do with, we're not allowed to maintain it other than snow and ice. But the other thing is where this is a something that has gone through the planning board, it's a development, it's a a lot of other things than just a bunch of small little private roads, you know? You know, they had a town beach on it. I'm not so sure it even falls into the category of the nineteen sixty-three vote.
But now we gotta really, no lawyer to get a hold of somebody. This is gonna go on for another
Well, I'm.
Number of months, unfortunately, yeah.
I'm hoping not, but.
Were, weren't we allowed, weren't the selectmen allowed last year to vote for one year, but that, that current year?
Yeah, and I think, when does that run out, Don? The vote you guys took in January?
It was, it was for the winter, uh.
Winter, yeah.
That, winter has passed.
So it's coming up soon.
So would you simply repeat the vote for all the snow, snow removal for this year?
Thank you, Don. So much. So much.
What are they saying in the very beginning? This is not our issue.
No, it's not. What was the triggering event for this? Was it Sonny, Sonny Como saying, I'm just not gonna plow the roads anymore? That's what triggered.
That's the, the whole thing.
Yeah. Yeah, Brad had gotten the information.
Well, at that point, the 20 houses down there, their option was to get together and take legal action against Como, not the town. Well, it should have.
It's not enough.
I'll, I'll, next time.
Let me see, keep going, I might have what you're looking for, will be.
Do you wanna be there?
Still have to just. Took a report.
What's the verb that you saw, let's see. Not, not where it is, what did it say?
No title search was done.
Okay, alright, I just wanna make sure it was.
By agreement of the two people, no title search was done, that's what I saw from one of those papers somewhere.
Okay.
Cause I pointed to it and I said, no title search was done. If they did with title search, they should have found it. But that page that I saw it on, I don't know if it was something from the lawyer or not, it's not in that packet. I just went through all of them again.
The other one, you gotta yield.
I don't read that fast, but I know what I'm looking for, you know where it was located on, see it in my mind, it was located in this small section. Something.
Yeah.
I think it must have been a letter, maybe it came from one of the lawyers, I don't know.
Yeah.
That's very interesting that somebody actually changed. Deed or material.
The only thing you said about turning left is.
I use this. When it says you. Well, if you're going down the hill, where's the oncoming traffic?
He doesn't know, what's, it's coming up there, well, it's the oncoming.
Correct, so you have to yield to them, if you're going straight.
He's coming up there, well, you gotta yield too.
Oh, yeah.
Does it, run a yield, it's like, personally, I'm just saying, it's, it's not right.
How, how is he right?
The stop sign, it ended.
You're gonna stop somebody on the hill in the ice and snow, believe it or not.
Well, see, now that two people are gonna sit there in front of the side, who's gonna, who's gonna go and who's gonna yield.
Show them what trees you might have to cut.
Fred, just, I did a lot of research over the weekend on that.
Yeah.
Statutes and everything.
Take off of his plan.
Yield sign is gonna be moved.
Well, we're gonna have.
Exactly what he's saying, you can't have two yielding. I'm just saying, you're coming in two directions. Who's first? Who's, who goes?
But if the car is going down the hill and it's going straight, it doesn't need to yield.
Well, does a car going down the hill have the right to cut across the center line to access Rutland Road in front of a car coming up where corner road?
If you're going down the hill.
That's not what I asked.
If, if you're going down the hill, you're on, on where corner road, right?
Right. You have the right to cut in front of somebody across the center line, a car coming up.
Technically, Massachusetts, the only right you have is to avoid accidents.
So you don't wanna answer the question, thank you.
Oh, I, I don't understand where you're going, I'm just saying, you're already on where corner road.
I'm not going anywhere, I'm asking you a specific question. If you're going down where corner road, if you wanna turn onto Rutland Road, which ends down on the corner, do you have the right to cut across in front of a car without signaling a vehicle coming up where corner road? Yes or no?
You're already on where corner road, okay? You should, you should have the right to continue on where corner road.
You do.
You do.
But it doesn't say that.
Doesn't have to.
It just says signal.
To make a left turn onto Rutland Road.
What the sign says is yield oncoming traffic.
Meaning traffic coming up the hill.
Oncoming traffic can be coming up.
So that yield sign will be on Rutland Roads.
Oh, that makes sense.
It's reminding people to use your signal when you turn left onto Rutland Road, so you are not cutting in front of people without signaling. That's where the problem.
I understand intersection's a problem, I'm not disagreeing with you.
The problem is the curve.
The signage is incorrect for what you're trying to do.
Well, what, what do you think it should be?
It's one thing for somebody who knows the road, but if you have somebody who has no idea going down.
That's not what I asked, what do you think?
Think about it, just think about it, you're asking, you're asking people to yield from both directions.
No, you're not.
That's what the signs are doing.
You're yielding to people coming up Rutland Road to the right.
It doesn't say that, it just says yield to oncoming traffic.
Going down the hill.
Going down the hill.
Well, now, coming up where corner road, okay, it says yield.
The other sign hasn't been removed, it should, that's why.
Do you know why that sign's there? It's been there for 50 years, 52 years, do you know why it's there?
Sign going down the hill hasn't been there for 50 years.
I'm talking about the one at the intersection.
Coming up the hill's always been a yield sign, yeah.
52 years, do you know why? That's what I asked you, do you know why?
I didn't, I wouldn't put that sign here.
Well, I'm gonna tell you why, because they rebuilt where corner road in 71, 72, and 73, and they moved the road to the east, which put it on top of Rutland Road. And they had a stop sign at the time on.
They never had a stop sign.
On Rutland Road.
They have never had a stop sign yet. I've lived in town for 47 years, it's never been a stop.
Well, I said 50 years ago.
You know, we had the same argument with up by your house, when they used to have a yield sign there, and they finally put a stop sign there.
Yeah, and theoretically, the same thing applies, the stop should be on New Braintree Road coming up the hill, cause Maple Street comes up and goes around the corner and connects with Barry Road.
Well, who was selecting then, why didn't they put it there?
Because you came to a meeting and asked if we could put up a stop sign.
And so did several other people, because there were so many.
I only remember you. Yeah, and it was usually people speeding.
But the.
But the stop sign should be on New Braintree Road.
That's funny, the stop sign is very apparent, okay, right now, you've got a yield sign in both directions. That's what it says.
You hung up.
I'm just telling you what it says.
There's been an issue with people turning left in front of people coming up the hill.
That's because they're on the same road, they're not changing roads, okay?
You wanna try this, Don?
I don't think you want me to.
Uh, yeah.
I think I would.
Down where corner road. You wanna make a left onto Rutland.
Rutland Road.
By law, 1914, you have to yield to the oncoming traffic.
Thank you.
Correct.
Right? Okay. You're coming up Rutland Road, there is now a yield sign, the old yield sign is right there for the traffic on Rutland Road. That sign doesn't belong there, it may have been there 52 years, but it's, it's not correct. It belongs on the, in the other road coming in.
Or a stop sign.
Or a stop sign.
It belongs on Rutland Road.
Right.
Rutland Road.
But it's.
That's what I originally said, yeah, that's what I originally said.
And the other reason that it ended up being the way it was, is because there were no four-wheel drive cars.
Right.
Everything was rear-wheel drive. And the former superintendent, two times ago, people were getting, cause that's an inside curve.
Right.
And people were sliding into the, into the catch basin.
Right.
And he felt because where corner road was new, you could back up if you couldn't make the hill and turn into that little cutoff. That's what it was all about.
So the way I see it now is, if you're going down where corner, you should yield or stop to take the left-hand turn onto another road, because Rutland Road ends right at that bend.
Correct.
Yeah.
So what, the yield sign on that side should be taken off, and on Rutland Road, it should just say merge ahead. And that's it, cause all you're doing is you're merging into where corner road.
That's not what we voted.
I know it's not.
We voted to move the yield, the yield sign to that other side.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's what we're gonna do, that's, that's.
What's the difference between yield and merge?
Well, if you yield on a, getting onto a.
Merge, you have to yield.
Yeah, exactly.
So if you yield getting onto a highway, you're dead, if you merge, you're, you're okay.
You go on every highway, the straightaway, right?
Yep.
Coming on, what's at the end of that ramp? Yield.
Usually a yield.
Not merge.
I don't know, I wouldn't wanna stop when I'm getting on a highway.
So does that mean there's a sign that's gonna be removed, is that?
So, well, it's time for halfway, done, to the other side. Gonna move the yield over.
So, yeah, that should, that should be moved, and I agree, that's what we, that was our original intention.
Where corner road is the main road, comes all the way up.
Right.
Rutland Road is what they call a feeder road.
Right.
If you follow the MGL and, and the engineering, that sign shouldn't be there.
Right.
That'd be like putting a, a yield sign in the middle of, uh, 290.
Yeah.
When you got an on-ramp.
So who will move that sign, just so I can make notice?
Yeah, who's moving this up?
No, he is, it's already, it's already planned on moving this up.
Okay.
Who's gonna do it?
Harold. Yeah, Harold's gonna do it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's already in the works.
Just hasn't been done yet.
Right.
So it will be soon? Because I think that's the argument.
Want me to go out and make it out?
Yes.
Claire, the, the thing driving this is, there has been a rash of people going down by the library, down where corner.
Yeah.
And thinking that road.
Yeah.
Is controlling, so they don't have to signal, they don't have, so people coming up where corner road are getting slamming on the brakes, it's happened to me twice, and I've had complaints about it personally from people in town, like, why, why are people just, and a lot of it had to do with that yellow line.
Right.
Instead of that line being straight, it has led everybody to believe that Rowan Road comes to the top of the hill.
It's true.
And it's wrong.
True, yeah, right, exactly.
So.
So, yeah, originally, when we talked about it, we're gonna put a right, a sign on the right that said, yield to oncoming traffic for where corner road coming straight up. Use your direction.
I yield all directions.
Yeah, me too.
Then the other sign's gonna be moved over to Rutland Road.
Sign, yeah. That'll take care of it.
I, I think the directional sign should probably be a little bigger.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Yeah, it should.
Tiny, definitely.
Yeah, I think.
The only question is, uh, who's gonna pay for it out of their budget? So Harold's paying for it now out of his budget.
Just make sure the signs meet the state standard.
Yeah, they have to be a certain size width, all that stuff.
There's a whole guideline on that.
Well, I'll sit down and talk with Harold about it, we'll get it straightened out.
Okay.
At least it's not a rotary.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
That caused a lot of aggravation.
You think?
Not me, I didn't do social media.
I tried to say right up front, where are you getting this information from, because it's not true.
Are we done with all business?
Yeah.
Now, what are we doing on the subdivision? Did you clarify that, did we? What's our next step?
Well, I think it should be. Corrected deed.
I think it should be a phone call in the morning to KP Law. And discuss what we discussed tonight with Shuren and, um.
And they need to see if a title search was done. This slight question that there might not have been done.
That was their reason not to proceed, was they did not feel comfortable with what they were finding with their title search. So, which is what Phil and I found this weekend, Friday. So.
It's still gonna take a couple of months, minimal.
I would say so.
I don't know.
At the rate we're getting calls back from one lawyer and another lawyer and whatever, it's very slow going.
We can do it in a month, month and a half, have a special meeting or something.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's moved this far in two and a half, three months versus the whole year before that.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
So as far as the plowing, you know, we're just let it go at this point, and we'll try to get it done as quick as possible.
I don't know what the exact date of the vote was.
Yeah, we're gonna have to look that up.
But if that was January, maybe?
But I think, I think the, the vote was just the winter of 2023, 24, so that winter is over.
Okay.
Well, I mean, 2024, I guess, it was just that, that beginning of, I, I would consider this one a 24, 25 winter.
Now, Shuren did say, uh, and I don't remember the exact word she used, but that because it's a subdivision, and it's still hanging out there in limbo, there really was no obligation to get involved.
Right.
Plowing and/or otherwise.
Well, that's in conflict with what Jared said.
So, we'll have to clarify it, because.
Yeah, she said something along the lines that it's in the discretion of the board to.
She threw it back at the board, you can do what you want.
You can do it if you choose to, you do not have to, and just because the board or the town voted to approve at, in your town meeting, the, the, the law, doesn't mean that you always have to apply it, it's, it's in the discretion of the board again, yeah.
Or to say, yeah and eh, but Jared also said, if you have any other private roads in town, you cannot favor one over the.
Yeah, and she, her, her argue, not argument, but her other, other perspective was it would be, you know, if, if the board had a, a reasoning as to why, you know, obviously, if you have a solid reason, this is why we do this one, versus, not just, well, we don't like the people down there, so we're not doing that, and you have to have.
Her opinion was in conflict with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That opinion that Jared gave you.
Yeah.
For sure.
Took 180.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Um. The other thing at the time, there was a town beach that was accessing there.
Right.
Right, which is not the case here, there's no, there's no path through, so to speak, it doesn't go anywhere.
No.
What are you doing tomorrow, Phil? You wanna sit in on the call? For a different day?
Well, first I have to see what her availability is.
No, I know.
Yeah. Do it around midday?
I'll see what her availability is, I just sent her an email, asking if she had any available, availability for tomorrow for a call, so. As soon as I get back or any other day, I will let you know.
This would, would be better for me, cause that's, that's light.
Okay.
That's good for me, too.
The whole evening that you and Phil are gonna reach out to the.
Yeah, with Mary.
At least one of our lawyers.
Well, this would be.
And see if we can't wrap this up somehow.
Well, I think Phil's suggestion is probably the most pragmatic one.
Oh, I agree.
Oh.
I agree with that, if we can do, if we can do it that way, that would be fine.
Then that way, we're not we're not pushing lot seven.
Mm hmm.
It'll, it, it can work itself out on its own accord.
Mm hmm.
If we're able to make the correction. Which really, I think we should probably only be in the business of notifying the grantor that they admitted it. The title company, whoever that may be, for the grantor.
Mm hmm.
Um. And let it fly, see where it lands.
Mm hmm.
Cause I think as much as we'd like to, we, we cannot accept the roads un, until this thing is settled.
Right.
Are you done now with all business?
I am.
Are you done with all the business?
I'm ready to make a motion to adjourn.
Not yet, we have correspondence.
Okay.
That I wanna get to.
All right.
Okay. All right, the correspondence we have to the board of selection, I am submitted my, submitting my resignation from the Ocam Council on Aging. Effective November first, twenty twenty-four, for personal reasons, Barbara Richinsky. What would the board like to do with that resignation?
Up with regrets.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we thank you very much for all of your time, efforts, and the many hours that you have put into the Council on Aging this year. I'll give the letter to the town folks. Any other business that come before the board?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, seven thirty-six. Okay.
These files are full, this is your copy. Thanks, Phil.